How about you guys, uh, Girl Scouts, do you want to lead the pledge?
Yep.
Know how to do that?
They sure will.
Okay, there we go.
We'll see what.
I'm glad to know you guys. I'm the United States of America and a true republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is this set on?
Give me a second.
We're recording.
We're recording, yes.
Alright, it's Monday, August eighteenth, this meeting. Uh, first off, we're going to have the Girl Scouts do a presentation. So, girls, if you wanna stand up, you wanna come over here and, and, uh, tell us about your plan.
Hi, my name is Alia.
And I'm Madison.
And we are Junior Girl Scouts, one two five five three nine.
And we're presenting a, our award for our, whatever.
For century.
For the. Our bronze award.
So you might be asking yourself, what is a bronze?
What is it?
It's an award that the Junior Girl Scouts will win. If, so they have a gold award and a silver award. The silver award is the one you get first, and the golden award is the one that's most important. It, this project takes twenty or more hours. It'll show that the girls have a lot of production, and it'll help the girl, and it'll, and they'll pick a community that would be exciting. Like, for example, a garden.
Or whatever.
A sensory pack, they chose a sensory pack. Do you want to make a sensory pack? What is a sensory pack? It's an area that can help calm someone when they are feeling frustrated or overwhelmed. Research. Remote activity develops smarter skills, improves social skills, develops thinking skills, helps teach and develop emotional regulation. The location, Ganser Smith Park Playground. Designs. We want to do a mixture of textures and hands. Like glowing rocks, or turds, or tree stumps. Or wavey designs, or bumpiness, or hardness, or smoothness. They did the text. Materials and work materials, cement, paint, smoothbox wood, rubber tree stump, school box, curb, pebbles, TV seat pipes, sand, sensors, texture materials, nails, work we need. Clean up area, layout design, build, unveil, and painting mist. Paint mist. This project will be fully funded through donations of materials and time. Thanks for your time.
I knew it.
Is it working? Alright. We need a motion to approve the minutes of the previous board meeting.
Let's get this question. Yeah, sure. So, when, when, uh, do you start the project? I like it, I like it a lot.
We'll start it when we have, like, a lot of TV news.
How soon do you think that will be?
Does it need, need approval?
Yeah.
You should probably approve them to do this.
Well, uh.
Or are you gonna do it on another park for, for the renovation?
Well, let's talk about an initial plan, and then where exactly we do want it. If there's, if there's a possibility of fitting it into Ganser Smith Park, or potentially moving it to some of our other parks. And improvements. I'd like to talk about that.
Okay.
So, um.
Thank you for presenting.
Do you wanna just present that they were in the plan? Do you want just?
They create a plan.
Approve them to do that so that
Sure.
they have, you know, that's what I would do, just say, yeah.
You're open to working with us and formulating a plan for one of our parks? Okay, great.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we move forward on the Girl Scout trip, five, five, three, nine.
Yeah.
For their sensory project.
A second?
All those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
You guys, do you wanna stay, or do you wanna go? Ask myself that question.
It could be a lot of fun, you never know.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, you want to?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the previous board.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
All those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
General, or, sorry, corrections. War number five, eighty. Twelve hundred dollars. War number six. General. One hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. Water, three thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. Nothing in sewer. Totally, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. Payroll number five, one hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
I motion? Second?
All those in favor?
Alright.
Um, we do have, um, do have a transfer. Um, we needed more money. We didn't, we didn't budget enough, or I didn't pay enough. For the, the cybersecurity that we approved, it was a swoop, replacing the switches and everything, it was um, there wasn't enough money put in the budget for it, so we needed to transfer thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents from the contingency account into computer and software for thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
We approved, they approved this last year, right?
Yeah, when we did the budget, but there wasn't enough money, we came in with more of them.
Your junior switches cost a lot?
The junior, we had hit to the wifi and every, it was everything.
I'll predict it is. Yes. I make a motion that we approve this transfer.
So, contingent to, to, thank you.
Nuisance alarm.
Okay, so, um. Nick and I worked on this a while when we first joined the board, and we, uh, tweaked it a little, and Ryan, hand to hand, uh, when he came on board as one of our fire inspectors, helped look into it a little bit, and fine tune it, so a nuisance alarm, uh, has been updated, grammatically fixed, and so on, so forth. Basically, this is to penalize people who repeatedly have alarms that go off for, uh, essentially for maintenance reasons. So, for instance, it's only, has a CO alarm that keeps going off, and they don't have their alarm company come and fix it. For a while, Kentucky Fried Chicken kept having events that kind of was the impetus for us agreeing with the town economy that we needed a nuisance alarm. Uh, they were, they were unwilling to spend the money to fix, I guess, one of their, uh, one of their detectors, and so essentially, it would create, uh, a mechanism by which the fire department would, uh, declare something a nuisance alarm, and, uh, and it would be documented, and then there would be an escalating fine system that would be attributed to each violation of a nuisance alarm. Uh, there would be an appeals board for, uh, for the, for, uh, essentially trying to fight, uh, a nuisance alarm. That body would be made up of, uh, Don would be the administrator, uh, I would be a member of, of the appeal committee, uh, uh, Dave, uh,
Ryan Stachalas.
Ryan Stachalas and
And Dave Watson.
Dave Watson. So, um, that would be the appeals committee's board for that. Um, and, uh.
So that's different from the administrative review board?
That's the administrator.
That, yes, yes. So we need to strike what's currently, which police chief, lieutenant, chief, fire inspector, and the village attorney?
Yeah, there's, it's really gnarly for five, for five people, and, I mean, um, uh, the, the fire chief, since the fire chief would be the one who was still in for issuing the, uh, law, the violation, uh, it would be, uh, it would be kind of counterproductive to having that, that person on. Um, village attorney, we replace with Dave Watson, or, um,
Yeah.
as an independent person, and the lieutenant, or the chief, as they designate, so. It could be somebody from the.
So is it, is it gonna be a termed position, or how?
It'll just be those people, who are, except for, the only other person would be Dave.
Yeah, but going forward under the law, you can't say any.
Right, you can't name a person, you have to name a position or a title.
We'll put, we'll change it to a resident of the village.
So you want, you, what you wanna say is three residents of the village, including the mayor?
No, it's only one resident and the two positions.
But isn't he filling the seat as a legal person?
Well, he is, but it doesn't need to be anybody.
It could be the appeals, how about we just make it the appeals officer? So that could be either the village attorney, or, or, in this particular, this particular year, the appeals officer is Dave Watson. It's gotta, yeah, you gotta, we gotta work out the language.
We have time to do, we don't have to hash it out now.
No, because we're just, we just, after this, we just gotta set the public hearing, but we can fix that at the public hearing even.
And we agree to set the public hearing and have the final version?
Yeah, no, yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's not a, that's not a substantive change.
That's right.
So by tomorrow?
We're doing an introduction tonight, and after the public hearing, determine whether or not you wanna make a substantive change or not.
But if we get language that we like, you know, phrasing, or who it's gonna be, prior to that.
Right.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
We'll have that by tomorrow.
Yeah, that's fine. And then Donald just posted on the website, yeah, I've got a preparation for the, uh, the public hearing. There's copies of the original draft over there, if anybody wants to look at it. There'll, there'll also be copies in, on the website and in the office.
My next question is, how come the, uh, the fees are not in here? It says there's a fee schedule, a document of the village board, but there's no fees in here.
Where's the fee schedule?
There isn't one.
Yeah, penalties for offenses.
It says we, we will set a fee schedule, I kinda wanted to know what kind of fee schedule we were thinking about before.
We'll, we'll, there'll be a fee schedule tomorrow, I'll, I'll send it out to you in the morning.
I guess my next question is, being September second is the end of Labor Day weekend, can we put this public hearing till October so that we have some more time to work this out? Because it seems like we're missing, we're missing this.
We're not gonna have the second meeting.
No, but it looks like we're missing, like, you have to rework this language, we don't have any fees.
Okay.
Well, if you wanted to set it for.
Set the public hearing for October, um.
It's been the first of October.
And then we can rework this, and we sit on the second, and everybody can feel better about it.
Does the fee schedule, Steve, does the fee schedule have to be part of the law, or is that kind of a separate side? It could be changed, then they can give it up.
See, my, my suggestion would be is that it be a separate, um, be a separate law, because we're, we're, we've done this in the past. We did, the, the law, doesn't the fee schedule, that we did have a referendum, we didn't have to do, or we don't have to put, that's not part of.
It does not have to be part of the law, because it changes over time.
Under penalties.
So what might be appropriate today is not appropriate five years ago, ten years ago, back when. And it could, that could be changed by, by, or go, doesn't have to be a local law.
But it should be adopted at the same time.
Should be adopted at the same time.
So, can we have a motion to set the public hearing for October seventh?
I'll motion.
Six.
Six, sorry.
I'll, I'll.
I motion, yep.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright, we'll have that tomorrow.
Um, I gave the board members the, the two, um, policies to be reviewed, always the breach notification for cybersecurity and the military leave, and I didn't make that change, uh, Lisa May, um, after the waters now.
HR.
HR, yeah, you change it from HR to village board.
Didn't we just do the military one?
We did it, and we have, I start, I started, we started last year late, so this is just, this is gonna be, how it's gonna be the new cycle of the new year.
Got it. I'll motion to approve.
Second? All those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed tonight?
Um, one other thing is, the police department, you wanna surplus it two thousand sixteen, right? It's a two thousand sixteen, I think the. I was gonna say, we're, we're surplus on the card, we're gonna have it.
Tomorrow, that may fall.
Um, a two thousand sixteen Dodge Charger, um, we wanna surplus it and put it up for auction, it needs a lot of repairs, so.
I will make a motion to let go of this Dodge, two thousand sixteen Dodge Charger.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right.
Mayor's in charge.
Mayor's in charge. Uh, okay. Mary Jane and I did a final analysis of, uh, of basically the income and expense for the court for the period ending five thirty-one, twenty-five. Um, and, uh, the revenue for the court for that period of time compared to the year prior was actually down by eight thousand dollars. Um, and the total calculated, uh, deficit for the court operation was a hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. I've sent the board this.
Can you say that again?
Yes, one ninety-two, four eighty-two.
You said you sent this, Todd?
I did. Are we doing the computer breach policy?
We did.
We did it, that's what we did.
We, are that we're gonna use the military leave policy?
We did it together. We did, I just said to you.
Okay. I, I'm not used to doing multiple policies at one time.
Do we approve both of them at the same time, because there was some grammar and stuff that I changed in the military.
Yeah, yeah, but they did the grammar, I started out.
Solar simplified is up to over a hundred and sixty household accounts, and several large commercial accounts across the village of Manans. They're gonna do another, uh, push to, uh, have people sign up for their solar, community solar program. Next policy for revision is gonna be, uh, we're gonna be looking at the sign and advertising, uh, policies of the village. Say it again?
That's a local law.
I'm sorry, law, or code.
It's a code, but it's gotta be done by local law.
Um, and, uh, um, and looking at some changes to that. Uh, wanna remind everybody, Community Night is Wednesday, five to eight, should be a great time.
I have a question about that. I thought we said we weren't gonna move that one down because of like the rock climbing wall and all that stuff, and like the park program calendar says rain date Thursday. But then the social media post said.
There's no rain, we're not doing any rain dates this year. Yeah. Um, will we move?
No, the park program calendar came out and said that there was a rain date on Thursday, the community night, but then the social media post said there is no rain day, but I thought we had said we were gonna do a rain day because of the rock climbing wall, all the bounce houses, all of that stuff, the drop fire trucks, all of that stuff.
Yeah, no rain dates this year, everything's, they're gonna be at the, uh, at the farmer's market.
Okay, let's up the rain, because I heard a lot of negative feedback about that.
And the, um, notification, the email.
I apologize, I.
Well, I know, I don't care about the four AM part, I care about the time.
I, I fixed that too, I apologize. I did.
Everything usually happens at six, I know.
But, but happens in notification system, they changed it from, from being twelve hour clock to being a military time.
Ooh.
And I hit four, thinking that it was four, and then, I apologize. That was, that was not done, it woke me up too.
Uh, I received a copy of the announcement from the Albany County Water Sewer Treatment Plant, starting their upgrades and their capital improvements. Uh, because Manans participates in the sharing of capital improvement dollars. Uh, this is basically for our notification, this has all been sent to the board. Uh, eventually, the debt for these projects will become, um, incorporated into the fees that Manans pays as a participant in the municipalities that share that, uh, county service, so we're starting to plan now for those escalating charges, because the program runs from twenty twenty, where their, their capital plan runs from twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty, so. Board can look at that at their leisure. There's a public hearing if anyone wants to go. Uh, I think for this week, that's really all there is, so, um, proceed reports. Lisa?
I'm waiting to hear back from my two liaison people. I've emailed them, and I'm waiting to hear back.
Okay. Thank you.
Nick? I have no report.
I, I, I'm gonna wait till the, uh, September to get the second report for the park program, after she's had a chance.
Yeah, so Brian, I have a clarification on that, because I thought you changed that.
Yes, so, Tim, I'm gonna switch the parks and school, Amali, and you're gonna get something else from, from Nick. So.
Parks and school. As of now, or as of when?
Depending on which document you looked at, at the organizational meeting, I got one that I was.
So that was, that was my mistake, and so, I, I, it was one of the things I, I meant to change today. You're, um, historian, parks, historian, climate and energy, and then you're the, you're the, uh, on the, uh, team with me on economic development, yes. On our key, youth, seniors, schools, Amali.
Okay. Alright, well, so, okay.
Okay.
Alright. Uh, no. So, we, you know, you mentioned at the last meeting about setting up a charitable
I guess, yes.
for the village to seek some of this funding that might be out there that we can possibly, uh, get uh, for projects in the village, but you have to, you have to have a nonprofit. Uh, so to set up a nonprofit arm, we need to, you know, first of all, we have to have, set up an organization which requires a tax ID in order to do so, and then appoint at least a minimal, a three-point, a three-member board uh, of residents to act as the board for that charitable arm, and I guess the idea is that we can get, there's, you know, uh, organizations and groups and government organizations that give, uh, uh, grants to non-for-profits, not meaning it's found, these aren't governmental entities, but so we, we could, but we can't establish one. So I'd like to make a, uh, have a resolution, uh, to authorize the village to create a charitable, charitable organization, uh, Friends of the Village of Manans, and then authorize requesting a tax ID number and creation of organization documents for said organization.
Steve, is that a, it's a five oh one, but is it a C three or a C? Okay.
I think it's a five oh one, C three.
Okay.
There were a lot of questions having this last meeting, yes. What are we doing with this, and why?
I think the idea is, there's, there's grants that, that are not for profit can get for functions and for projects that cannot go to the village, and so maybe we open up ourselves to a couple more possible to do things, you know, for example, the folks with your park, and things like that.
So we're just opening a generic one instead of?
So, the idea would be that we would have Friends of the Village of Manans, and then people could direct their donation to the charitable organization, to say fire, or parks, or, uh, uh, you know, to DPW if they wanted, if they wanted, you know, I mean, it, it could go to wherever. Um, and, and there, you know, there's, uh, there, my understanding in how Waterbelieve does their charitable organization is i- i- if it's directed, if the money says parks, they put it to their park. Uh, if it goes to the fire department, it goes, you know, specifically from the village to the parks, or the, to the fire department, et cetera, and so um, there are organizations that do give to municipalities, uh, but they can only give if there's a charitable component to it, and by establishing a five oh one C, whatever, uh, we satisfy that requirement, uh, and then those funds would be basically, uh, used for whatever the board of the Friends of Organization feel that those funds should be used for using the guidance that the donor has given, uh, you know, to direct those funds to.
So then how does it work for like the fire department, who already does their own fundraising, and then we're also, how does all of that?
So the fire department doesn't do fundraising, the fire company.
And the police, it's the PBA, it's not the police department.
So, this is, this is something where the fire, so somebody, for somebody wanted to donate to the fire department specifically, and say, I wanna buy you, uh,
Fire truck.
A fire truck. Like, right, Regeneron, for instance, could donate a fire truck and receive the tax benefit of it being donated.
They can't do that now?
Technically, no.
Right. I'm just saying, that is not.
It is five oh one C three, it has to be recognized by the state, you write a grant, and, you know, we do this all the time, and we read the grants and decide if it's worthy cause or not, but it does have to be a five oh one C three, it has to be recognized by the state.
Got it. So that's kind of what we want to establish.
Mike also raised his hand.
There's a, I agree, we went through this with the IRS, with the fire company.
Yes.
And we thought it was a five oh one C three, and it's a five oh one C four.
Yeah.
You should, you should talk to the IRS.
Yeah.
And get that clarification.
So that was, that was the, the, that was the purpose of the motion, is to allow us to research the, the formation of, uh, whatever, and then, and then correct.
Tax.
And then that would be, again, a separate organization from the village board, et cetera, just like the fire department is, or company is different from the fire department, and so so we just want to start that process, um, and, uh.
I was just looking it up, it is a five oh one C three. That would be set up, it's gotta be separate and distinct. Separate board.
Yeah. So, uh.
I have just clarification on the motion, because the motion sounded like we were approving to move forward with this, not look into.
Well, I'd like to establish a five oh one C three for the purpose of collecting these donations and using them for the purpose for which they were intended in the donation.
And have we got any guidance from NICO or anybody on doing this?
This is, uh, the common process for municipalities, and Waterbelieve has something exactly like this.
It might be a little more than just simply filing paperwork with the Department of State, establishing a five oh one C three, normally, setting up nonprofit or non-for-profits, it requires, uh, judicial approval. I don't know if that's the case in this circumstance, but.
You have to have a board.
Yes, correct.
Bylaws.
Independent board.
You have to have.
Yeah, and I said that, you have to establish your own guidelines and, you know.
Yeah. Procedures.
Um, Waterbelieve does this, so, so, instead of inventing a whole new thing, uh, Charlie Petroselli was, was gonna share what they did there, and we can use that as a guide. Um, and, um, and, uh, I thought, uh, Dave Watson could look into this, and then consult with, with Steve, if that's.
Sure, absolutely.
Um, on the formation of it, uh, obviously, until, until everything, all the organization documents are, uh, complete for our. uh, complete for our review and approval, uh, it's, it's not approved. But this would be more than looking into it, but less than.
So the resolution is to explore, come back with findings.
Correct.
And then there would be a subsequent resolution to approve.
Correct.
Okay.
Tim, you had the motion?
Yes.
Give me a second. Call second motion. All those on there.
Hi.
Tim, anything else? Molly?
All right, so Tim did ask for Brianna to put some stuff together, um, but I also asked her and Elizabeth, and they're working on it for the next meeting. What went well, what didn't go well, what kind of needs to change, um, overall. Having been there quite a bit this summer, I think it was fantastic, um, and it went without a hitch.
Especially considering.
Having, you know, the final hour of getting somebody in there.
I think that's been great.
I did also talk to them if we were to keep the same structure, if they would maybe consider staying on. Um, one has confirmed, the other one said she wanted to think about it. Um, I'm also happy, I don't know if everybody heard, Brianna has now accepted a position as a fourth grade teacher at Manan School, so she will be here in the community, um, all the time. So we're very excited about that. Um, the seniors are hosting their annual, uh, volunteer appreciation dinner next week, um, at Yanni's Two on Wednesday, so they have, they usually gotta go turn out for that. Um, and then I just have a couple of questions. So we talked about Manan Road and the parking, and we talked about doing the whole parts. I think Manan Road has to happen now. Um, it's becoming a daily occurrence that I can't even get down the street. Um, I don't know if they just don't care, they have zero respect. Uh, the rumor I've heard on the street is, well, there's no court anymore, so I don't care if you put a ticket on my car. Um, we gotta do something about Manan Road. But I can't, like, the other morning, there were two construction vehicles on either side, and the guy just stood in the middle of the road, like, they just don't care. Um, I think it's gotta get switched to one side. Um, whether the rest of that happens, you know, at the same time or not, I think Manan Road is a huge problem. Thoughts?
I don't agree that Manan Road should be one, one side only. I think it's unfair to the side that is tasked with having a park, parking in front of their house. And I think we're going to alternate side parking on North Lions, South Lions, and on Brookside.
Then we have to start towing and booting cars.
We don't have the, we don't have the resources to do that. We have, we have, Kevin is looking into, um, and we're, we're pursuing a different ticketing system that has a little bit, uh, more, uh, uh, more functionality to it than the paper tickets, uh, and with no follow-up from it like we had when we had the court. There was very little follow-up because it was a low-value item. I think the fines need to be explored and increased so that they actually mean something. It's not ten bucks that people don't care about. And, and then we're gonna have a, a system whereby if they don't pay it, if the fine escalates, et cetera.
Ten dollars?
No, it's twenty-five.
It's twenty-five dollars. I got one, I got one in front of my house.
There are tickets that are ten dollars.
Yeah, they're ten dollars. My roommate got it, honestly.
Um, ten dollars doesn't mean anything.
I would be curious to know why you don't think Manan Road is a problem.
I didn't.
I agree it's a problem. Like, for instance, I was leaving one day, there were cars parked on both sides, and a Manan's police officer drove by without giving a ticket. So that's an issue right there to begin with. So they're doing the job they should be doing. But I agree with Brian, I don't think it should be one-sided because why should one side of the street be burdened twenty-four seven with cars? Decrease home value.
I think if you took a survey, the majority of the cars that park in the street belong to one side of the street.
Well, just, that's the way the street was designed.
But that's, the problem is that the people on the side of the street, the majority of them park in the road, don't want to park on the other side.
That's the street, that's, that's the street that you live on there. It's, it's, that's the street.
I mean, disagree with Brian, Brookside doesn't need alternate side parking, I don't think. It's wide enough. I would say it's quite wide.
Not quite wider. And you can't pick and choose, either, either we do this, the whole village.
I agree.
Otherwise, it, it doesn't, it's, it's not fair. And it's not equitable to say that this street should be alternate side parking because we created a survey and this side should not. Either we're doing this all in one, or, or what are we doing?
Especially since you had the problem on Brookside this past weekend.
Correct.
There was no way, they, they were parked.
There was, if, if, if there was alternate street parking, everybody would have gotten a ticket who was parked on the wrong side of the road. That would have been one way to enforce.
And it would have taken six hours to have a party.
You, you know.
But. Go ahead, Mike. I, I agree with what you're saying, and, and, you know, I've even thought about that on, uh, what was that, North Lions? If you parked on both sides of most of the sections of North Lions, you're not getting a single car down there. Without, especially a, a, a larger pickup truck, without scraping vehicles, but you also can't walk on that road because you got cars on both sides and you're trying to walk dogs, there's no sidewalks, so you're in the road. Uh, Villa, there's no notification that you can park on either side. So technically, you can park on both sides of Villa, and the cars would almost be touching each other. So obviously, that road would be blocked. Brookside is no wider, maybe a couple of feet wider than Manan Road. You can park on both sides, and as we just saw with a huge party that happened, you couldn't get up, you couldn't get an ambulance up that street if you, if you had to without smashing cars. It's, it's, all of those streets need to be alternate parking, but it needs to be enforced. The other thing that'll happen is sometimes police officers will knock on doors and say to people, you know, it's after hours, and then other times, they just ticket blanketly, even if it's ten minutes after, which I know is still a violation. But why give a warning sometimes where you're knocking on doors and why drive up the street sometimes and not ticket anything, and then why ticket every car? Or ticket three of the cars and then drive off, and there's still two that have no tickets on. Did the officer know that person? I don't know, I'm just speculating. It's just a con, it's, it's, there's no consistency to our parking regulations, enforcement, and one street's one way, another street's another. I would be confused. If I didn't live here a long enough time, I would be, I would be totally confused.
Hi.
Uh, couple of comments on the whole subject. One, I don't think it's fair to say that a police officer drove by a car or a police officer only ticketed these cars and not these cars. They could have had a call, they were going to, or they could have been in the middle of writing tickets and gotten a call they had to leave for.
True.
Uh, so I don't think that's quite fair. Secondly, I don't think we need to be encouraging more tickets in general. We already write a lot. Thirdly, North Lions in particular should be one-side parked. There's a curb on one side of that street, there's people's lawns on the other side of that street. Uh, I understand what you're saying, but I completely disagree that it's gotta be one thing. One solution applies to everybody. I think you need to look individually, street by street, and decide what's the best to resolve the issue you're having up the street. Because I can tell you the next thing you're gonna have is everyone on the west side of North Lions who do not have a curb are gonna be down here screaming, a lot of people parking on their grass, because that's what's gonna happen. Manan Road has paved on both sides. Brookside at least has a sidewalk. North Lions does not. Put all that parking on curbs.
We're gonna have a public hearing to talk about, you know, implementation of, of all, of, of the streets that, that, uh, that, that we've been talking about for a while. So, you know, you, you, your comment is absolutely valid. Uh, it's just a question of how do the officers know? It just, if everything was the same way, it would surely be a lot easier to know. It's always a right side on this day, it's always a left side on this day, and to just hit, you know, I think that would make their job more efficient, but you're, you're, I, I, I get what you're saying.
There are signs on Manan Road. You don't need to know, he's got, well.
I get it.
Are, are they doing the whole village, or they just, are we just messing with the center?
I'm sorry?
Are we doing the whole village?
What do you mean?
Messing with the center. I know all the street parks. Are they doing it up on the hill?
It already is on the hill.
It is?
Yeah.
I live in North, I mean, South Manans. It's like that on every street.
Everything's alternate.
Yeah.
I bet it happened before I got here.
I agree, and I would give consistency.
I was mad at myself because I know what the sign says. I can read.
I mean, the, the other reason that just, the alternate street parking helps during snow enforcement that we can clean, if we had to clean a side of the street on one day, this side, and then the other side with the next day. And that's why alternate street parking does work. So. All right, so we'll, we'll, uh, Molly, do you have?
Yes. The other thing that came to mind, Kevin's idea for the police department, a lot of the neighbors were saying about the kids are being reckless on their bicycles. So similar to like, the school has tried to do like a bike safety thing, but maybe if it was like an open house here at the, like, at the police station where people came and you gave some kind of safety course or something on the bicycles, um, the way they come flying over those tracks up Manan Road, it's absolutely terrifying. Um, and.
Helmet compliance also is, is, is lacking. I hundred percent agree with that.
Yeah. So maybe, again, I don't wanna say tickets, but again, like, you know, even educating parents that they're the ones who, you know, are liable when their kid is out without a bicycle helmet. Um, and then I think we'll solve it.
That's fine.
Special report.
Just a reminder of the vacation, the twenty eighth to the first. Um, the Albany County Purification, older report, older report link is now on the website. The DPW received a grant from Irma, and they got some safety equipment. They got forty combs, eight signs, five hard hats, five vests, two stop-and-go signs and flags. And if everything works out all right, and we get construction completed, the next board meeting is gonna be over in the new board meeting, not the old one, or the old board. And our Wi-Fi is working. Cool. And you don't need a password to get onto it. You just have to, it's, it says Manan's guests or something went on your Wi-Fi.
Thanks, Don.
All right, then.
Mary Kay.
Hey, I saw all of you this. Uh, I wanna close some bank accounts officially because there's no that account. So, did you see, did everybody get them for a stop? Looking for, no?
I did open it. I didn't see it. I'm on a late day.
So it's ARPA, and you guys are all done with your upper mind, so I'd like to close that out. Um, your hundredth anniversary checking account, you no longer need that, you said, so I'd like to get rid of that. Um, you get your three justices and their valid account. I'm gonna close everything, so I'd like to get them off of our book, too.
Is there any money in that name?
No.
Where was the list? Oh.
There's, there's no way.
No, because, um, for instance, if you receive court revenue, it will come to the village general.
Okay.
Not to a specific judge, because we don't have a judge.
Do you need, do we need a motion to close those accounts?
Yes. Yes.
I'll make a motion for the, uh, village treasurer to close, uh, the ARPA one hundredth anniversary uh, justice, uh, justice counts and, what was it?
Hundredth anniversary.
Hundredth anniversary justice.
In the ballot.
And ballots.
I'll second.
All right.
Brian, you said any money that we did come in from the town, we're just going for a general. We don't need that.
As opposed to a specific. Well, we did.
What was that?
Any, any money that we received from the town colony or course binds?
Yeah, that's gonna go in the general. It always has gone in general.
Okay. And, but, but won't be kept in a specific account. Public comment. Phil?
Quite interesting. Most of everything else speaks for themselves. There's little for me to say about.
Thanks, Phil.
But that's it. Now, while I'm delighted to hear that the village is working to replace most signs and signposts, including yellowed and, and signs throughout Lower Manans. However, it takes a great deal of time to replace signs and signposts because of red tape to get money from New York State, and I remain frustrated with the slow process of getting sign replacements. Job done, and I'm sure you're all just as frustrated like I am. Now, during, now during this July seven twenty-five village board meeting, I, I found out from Clerk Don Hannah, he had that three fifty-nine Broadway where the car dealer once used to be. And now it's an unused building. Now, I'd like to know what is gonna be done to the building?
Private property, we can't do anything with it.
Is it, will it be converted to apartments, or you don't know?
It's private property. I don't know what they're gonna do with it.
Right. And just so you know, everybody, the village, I don't want the village of Manans to be involved in my proposed inland fish farm. We, we want some private company to create the kind of business that our village needs. Just so you know that. Right, I.
We talked about that.
I like to, you plan to use three or four parking spaces for disabled drivers at the parking lot, I guess, with park permits. Now that should be done, so it's easier for just people, disabled people to get to the pavilion building or use the restroom. Now, as I have said, I'm rated able to help clean up with work cleanup work details before and after our annual community night, I guess, with Smith Park, if it doesn't rain. But they sit down here and reports, it might be raining during part of Wednesday. So now, unfortunately, it looks like I might not be able to get to clean up more details about that's a park.
Hasn't, hasn't rained for a month, and of course, Wednesdays.
But they say it might rain, so.
All right.
One, now, if the village of Manans is gonna perform roof repairs for all of this village, public buildings in the future for welfare, public safety, efficiencies, efficiency, time-wise, and the quality of life reasons, I'd like to recommend our village should use synthetic rubber in roof repair of its public, through its buildings, not natural rubber. Now, what about this alternative parking in Manans? I don't think.
We're gonna have a public hearing on it.
All right.
You can, you can, all your questions should be answered then.
You gotta remember, you know, one size does not fit all. That's the way it works.
Understood. Agreed.
I mean, I'll, I'll support it, but I just wanna get more information. All right, thank you for letting me speak on an important issue. They're important to me and every will to the village.
Paul?
My list is in this one, really, Phil.
Okay.
There's a few. One meeting, uh, with the handicapped study, did that finish?
Yes.
So what did they decide about walking up Brookside on the south side?
The slippery, the slippery.
No, when you get to the, I mentioned this a few meetings ago, when you go up the south side, side where we're heading up toward the tracks, you get up in front of what used to be Blader's House. Okay? In order to get across the tracks, you gotta
Yeah.
walk through the grass, up on the, up on the road to get out.
Before the summer's out, the DPW guys and I are gonna figure out how to put new pads in there.
Okay, because when it, when it, if you did cut through the swatch, through the trees, you just hit tracks. You don't, it's not like the cross.
We're gonna, we're gonna figure out what, what the right path is, yeah. And, and on the other thing, uh, the, uh, the slipperiness of the, uh, of where they ground down.
Yeah.
Don talked to the gentleman from the company that did that, and there's a way to basically put some grooves, grooves in it. Kinda like what they do on, uh, clover leaves, you know, how they groove the, the concrete so that it's, you, you don't slide off.
So there's still a couple on the south side, one in the front of Max House and another one.
They're gonna do a wall. They're gonna, they're gonna get the wall.
It's not the slipperiness, though. It's the, the one in front of Max House was so high when they grounded down. Now, instead, it's still not, it doesn't go like this, it goes, boom, like that.
They like didn't start far enough back, so they're like a.
When they fitted it out, they didn't go far enough. So now, instead of when you're walking along, it's almost like you stepped off the curb.
Maybe they can ground those down even further.
Yeah, I think they need to just stretch it out a little.
You gotta do it the next time they're in the area.
They're in the area to have, it, it's, it's not a large enough job for them to come, uh, until they're, they've got something else on the area.
You're gonna let them know that, just get a hold of me when you're gonna come, and I can point you out.
Okay.
I'm usually around.
They were planning a job, next time they were in the area to do another job, they were gonna add this onto the list.
Oh, yeah, it's like a free season before winter.
Yes.
Before winter that they should come to the area.
You're asking too much.
I know.
Is, is Brookside still, is that in the paving loop for this year or is it going?
Spring.
Okay, because if you notice, it's really alligator, alligatoring, and along, now along the side, I don't know what happened. It's almost like a tank drove down the street. It's like a rumble strip that runs all along the south side of the street going up. Well, you know, you're talking about narrow streets, and if they don't drive on the rumble strip, you know, if you're in trouble, okay, decide that. You know, if you're in trouble, okay, decide that. So let's get to the last Thursday night. Um, I, I, I've been a, a thorn, I've talked to Don several times. I've talked to, I, I never got a chance to talk to Kevin. I talked to you through Miley. Um, but I've talked to Ryan a few times and this party, uh, it was like Thursday Night Live down at Jenny's Landing. I mean, they've had plenty of parties over the years that I've complained about. Um, we've even called the sheriffs. And after a twenty minute discussion with the sheriff's dispatcher, he said to my wife, well, lady, what do you want us to do? Okay, and then I, I know it probably wasn't our guys here, but then from the time she got off the phone, it was forty minutes before the car showed up at the house. And this is two o'clock in the morning.
This was Thursday?
No, no, no. This is, this has been going on since state moved in.
Okay, so what happened Thursday?
Thursday night, it was a family reunion. And from what I understand, after talking to Don and talking to Ryan, the lady came down and applied for special abuse. Okay, and once Donnie told her that it had to be, she had to bring it back and it had to be signed off by Ryan and you. She never brought it back. And knowing that the party was going to be out of control. So we got home around six o'clock and there was probably, I don't know, fifty to sixty cars everywhere and the music was pumping. It was going. Um, and so
An unreasonable level?
Unreasonable.
Okay, so it was an unreasonable level?
The, in, in Tanny's Allen, they, they sent a, a video of their son's bedroom inside. It sounded like the music was right outside.
And so, so who called, who called the dispatch center? So why didn't Molly call the dispatch?
Calling the dispatch is a waste of time.
Okay, well, I, I don't know what to tell you.
She got ahold of Kevin and Kevin sent the guy. I'm serious. It's a waste of time. They don't care about Manan's.
The problem is, there's a problem with doing it that way, though. What if Kevin, what if Kevin, she couldn't get ahold of Kevin or Kevin's in the middle of something? Well, it doesn't matter who called them, but
I have called before for noise and that Kevin told me, call here, press number six, you get the sheriff's dispatch.
Yeah.
And they sent them right away.
Well, that
I'm sorry that that didn't happen on your, when you called, but I have called and they have come right away.
But this was, and then I guess my next thing, and I know, and our guys do a great job. They do a really good job. But there was three cars there for two hours. So my question is, who was watching the rest of the village during those two hours? All these people were taking all their time. And why did it take two hours to dissipate apart?
Kevin, you want to talk about, uh, the response, et cetera?
Uh, you know, at the time of the, when the, you know, the call, I mean, you know, Brian talked on about it earlier, is, you know, everybody who's parked legally and the party, you know, the owner of the house was cited for the party, uh, under the noise ordinance. You know, the kind of the teeth to that is, you know, that, that's, that's the difficulty, you know, that's what, you know, that's the tool that we have in hand.
Is our underage drinking?
No.
So I mean, I don't think it's for underage drinking. No. I think we need to do something about it. I, I don't
Specifically what?
I don't think somebody should be able to have a party that large in a neighborhood.
There's no law.
If there was something in St. Hill, what would have happened?
There's no law. And you can't make a law, for instance. I, I understand that, that I was there. Okay, I was there with the police. Okay, I saw what was going on personally.
Well, you didn't breathe too deep because you would have gotten arrested.
You, you, you can't say, for instance, that this house can have fifty people and a house up on Pheasant or Gorman or one of those houses can have a three hundred person wedding for their daughter, like some have. You, that's discrimination. You can't do that. So you have to use the law and the law that we have that applied here was noise. You have the right and everyone around this house has the right to quiet enjoyment and our noise ordinance is not, is at nine o'clock. If they hadn't had the music so loud, okay, there would have been nothing for us to cite this person for. That's, that's the law. We live in America. People have the right to have parties. They have the right to have parties every weekend. And, and would I be pissed off if it was next to me? Sure. I wouldn't be happy. But it's not a violation of the law. So for somebody to suggest, for instance, that can we create a law that says you can only have fifty people in your house? I think that's ridiculous. That's a constitutional violation and we're not going to explore something like that. Now, I understand that you're mad, but for somebody to send me a text message and just say, take them for whatever, that's not appropriate. We can't just make things up to ticket somebody for having a family reunion. Now she handled it poorly. She came in and started the right process. Okay, she could have gotten a permit for something and we would have had to work with her and give her guidance about parking and making sure that they didn't park on people's lawns and making sure that there was enough room for a fire truck to get them. It's all of that. But for instance, we were, Don even suggested that they park at the village office, which is a public building and is perfectly legal for them. So the problem here was that she didn't follow through. Okay, she understands that. She accepts responsibility for that. She actually apologized that it got out of hand. She understands all that. She ended up getting an appearance ticket. I, I don't know, to say blanket, we need to, we need to stop this behavior. I, I don't know what you're planning on stopping and I don't know how you're planning on, on stopping it with laws.
Three weeks is gonna happen again.
So I have a question. I have a question. If the only thing, I'm just curious, if the only chain was noise, then why didn't you have three officers there?
Obviously, it's a lot of people. We're trying to get them out of, you know, to leave, because the party was over. We're trying to get them
So because of the noise ordinance, you were able to shut the party down?
She was able to get arrested if it continued, you know, you know, she got cited, you know, uh, it's not a crime, but it's a
I'm just trying to understand the process of how it went down, like why three officers were there if it was just to tell them to turn the music down?
Yeah, I mean, it was, there was three because there was three working. It, it, you know, Thursdays are heavy as day. There's three working, so there's two officers and a sergeant on Thursday. Um, so that being said, we were just trying to get them to, you know, to leave the party. Obviously, there's a ton of people, you know, anybody who's seen anything about it knows there was a ton of people and just trying to get them to, you know, all leave in accordance and make sure that there was no continued problem or the party didn't just start right back up.
So because of the noise ordinance, they had to stop the party. That's what I'm trying to get clarification.
That's our, that's our only, that's our only
But legally, they did not have to leave.
That's what I'm asking.
They legally did not have to leave.
So then I guess I'm still confused then why we, like, why you even showed up? Why were there three officers there? Like, I'm just trying to, like
The safety, the safety of the, yeah, the safety of the public was the immediate concern because they were parking on both sides and, and to, to make sure that everybody left. And, and if they were leaving in an orderly fashion, we, we had one officer who was newer, so, uh, so, um, and Thursdays, when there's three guys on until eleven o'clock, right?
Yeah, and Thursdays, just the, the way that the days off schedule works, that's the day that there's everybody to, you know, they're all hugely here.
The safety of the officer too. You want one officer there.
Yeah, I mean, that was a lot of people, you know, especially considering it was a little confrontational that, 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 I mean, it was, that was an appropriate response and, and, uh,
I'm not saying it wasn't. I was just curious why?
You know, I mean, we couldn't force them to leave, but since they were leaving, we were staying there. They, they weren't excited about the party ending. They weren't excited about, you know, getting ticketed. So at that point, instead of just leaving one, you know, the ball's going out at the time. We left everybody there. That was the busiest day. Tim, I don't know who.
I, no, I don't know. I just actually, okay. I just wanted to ask, i- is this resident aware that if they have a party, like a, you know, a large party of that nature, they can rent the park?
So yes, that is something that, that is something that I, I, I personally discussed with them, that, that if they want to find a way to celebrate responsibly and, and that, that the park is available and, and, and do it the right way. That was, that was the purpose of my being. Is to introduce myself to this person and say, look, uh, is she aware or, or did she say she was aware? Those are different things, you know what I mean?
They know. I told their boyfriend.
You know what I mean? Like, and, and so
I just, I just think maybe
Purpose was to say
Suggest it for a future development.
This is how to do this so that you, you don't have this, this confrontation and, and, and I, I think it, it tamped down the immediate reaction and, and hopefully this won't, won't happen again. So, so that's what, go ahead.
Been two weeks ago.
Mike?
Um, as far as the public safety goes, the, there was no way a fire truck was getting up there, like, not even close. My pickup, I had to fold my mirrors and just see my pickup truck off the road. Why is there, it was two parts. Is there a mechanism legally? If there isn't, maybe the village should explore that regardless of what the parking laws are at the time, if the fire chief or police chief or someone of authority determined that something was unsafe because it limited access to emergency vehicles, then other actions could be taken.
Like what?
Getting people, so if there was a mechanism in place where the police could determine a fire truck can't get up the road, or they call the fire department, the fire department would be, we can't get up this road. Okay, now we start telling people, you gotta move your cars right now or we're gonna tow them out of here.
Well, the purpose
I don't, I don't need to know the answer right now.
Well, that's why you try to do these things before, not after.
I understand. But this isn't the only time. I mean, every concert in the park, North Lions, you can't get a fire truck to come down. Like, it's, and
And so the alternate street parking would solve that or one stride, one, one side street parking would solve that.
Correct.
So, um, and for instance, on the villa
Well, what happens up in St. Hill Lane?
Uh,
Because there is an alternate. They're, they're parking, you have the exact same thing as what happened on Brookside or Gorman at the party. I'm just saying, if there were something, because I've closed a lot of roads in eighteen years in the fire service.
So just, let's, let's use that as an example. In the instance that somebody's blocking, the police come and they knock on the door and they try to, they try to tell them to, to, you know, that they're blocking traffic in an unsafe manner. Is there a mechanism? I mean, can we just tow them like they do in Boston? I, I don't, I mean
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I mean
If there's not, and you had that mechanism for the future, that could help the, encourage the party to dissipate.
So the question
Also ensure emergency
Agree, agree, yeah.
Happen to the people that aren't involved in the party.
So the, 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 the law comes down to notification. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but you can't, you can't just act without somebody being probable.
No, I'm not saying you have the ability to today. I'm saying maybe this is something to look into to give us the ability.
It would have to have appropriate signage, correct? I mean, you can't just make a law about parking without it adequately being signed.
See, I think, you know, Mike, the, the, the issues that you're raising are issues that should be raised at public hearing for determining whether or not alternate side parking is appropriate. They're saying that fire manic, uh, responses are affected by people parking legally on both sides of the road.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, I think that's something the board would, would want to consider in determining whether or not, you know, they need to do alternate side parking.
And that's how we
The, the thing that you're if I'm, maybe I'm, I'm not understanding, but if you got a call for a, uh, that requires the fire department to respond and you can't get up the street, going and knocking on doors is not going to address your response, the, the response time. Your response, it's an emergency. So I ju, I think that's something for purposes of public hearing, which would be very
I support that.
And that's, and that's how we, we, we really got to the determination that, 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 uh, I'm sorry, Lions and Brookside should be in the same format as the rest of the street is because Dave said there is a concern about fire apparatus being able to traverse the road if it was, if there was parking on both sides. And so, so some, something has to change.
Yeah.
What it is is unacceptable. What, what it's to become is what we need to figure out. Sure.
I, I got one more topic real quick and then I'll be quiet. Nuisance alarm. I just want a clarification. So who, who has the authority to make the decision that this is a nuisance alarm that will get taken?
The fire chief.
The fire chief. Can we change the wording in here that do state that? Because right now it states village of Menance where no fire personnel, ambulance or rescue services are required as determined by such personnel.
What's that?
Way, uh, forty eight dash five to first the very long full third sentence. The way it reads, and Steve can clarify, because I'm definitely not the attorney. It, well, I read it as any of those personnel can make that determination. And if that's the way it was going to be, then I would like a representative of the fire department to be on the administrative review board. I completely agree that if the fire chief is the one who makes this decision, there should not be under.
That's, and that's the way that was set up. It was thought to be set up. So we to stay
My concern was just it states the, starting on the second line down, the village of Menance where no fire, police, ambulance or rescue services are required as determined by such personnel, including but not limited to blah, blah, blah. The way I read that, fire, police, ambulance or rescue service personnel could make the determination that this was a nuisance alarm.
And you think, and so we just want it to be the fire chief and or a lieutenant or
Or his designate.
Why, why, why limit it to the fire tree? Or put it, yeah, I don't care. It should either be the fire, someone in the fire department or the fire department should have a representative on the administrative review.
Well, yeah, keep, keep, keep in mind that the, the nuisance ticket doesn't have to necessarily be issued
Yeah.
That right there.
No, 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 I get that.
So, so that's why we've been talking to Dave about the construct.
But it, but this would also be for burner alarms too, right? It wouldn't be just fire alarms.
Right, well, that was
I think it should be first responders.
But that's
Whoever that might be, police, fire or ambulance. I don't, I don't disagree with that, though. But if that's what it's going to be, then I feel the fire department should have a representative on the administrative review.
The police do.
Oh, yeah. What are the, I don't care which way it goes. I just feel it should go one way or the other. If you, if, you know, I would say apologize. I really don't have a say this year, but if the, if the fire chief is on the review board and the police is on the review board and both entities could issue a ticket, then one of them is abstaining from the review if it's their prospective agency that issued it.
No, I have no issue with that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So eventually, when we get to codes, the, the same process, some of the same participants, except the person, you know what I mean? Like Lyle, if he enters a code ticket, can't be the administrative review officer, you know what I mean? So, so we're just trying to mix up who is reviewing whose work.
I, I have no problem with that, but
So let's
It can't just be on one side of the house.
Yeah, yep, agrees. Um, all right, so we still have until October sixth.
October sixth, yes.
To, uh, to fix that and we'll have that done within a week. Jared?
Right, uh, hopefully this will create more controversy, but I have spent a couple hours with this La La. Our new business in Menance.
Yes.
I was wondering if you could put in a newsletter next month to try to welcome that business into town. She's a lovely person and the food is fabulous and
It's in there.
It's been in there twice.
Yeah, it, it, it'll uh, it'll be in next, next month's, uh, Menance modeling as well. Yes.
Just like that.
Yes, yep. Hello, yeah, and it's a great place. She is rel, she's sweet as can be and, and I enjoyed, uh, our time there. So, so I'll probably be there in within the hour, so.
It's okay. Everything's up for the day.
Yeah, that's
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Of course.
Gonna move four meets two.
All right. Steve?
I just want to thank that this parking thing is finally growing some legs after about eight years, but, um, when is the public hearing going to be when we talk about all the parameters of that?
Uh, we can do that October second, hopefully as well.
No, six.
Sixth.
Well, it has to be introduced. We have to
Well, well, no, well, well, we can have a public comment about specifically about parking and then not necessarily introduce the actual
You want to do that in September. Then we can talk about it. If there's gonna be comments.
The only meeting we're having in September is the day after Labor Day.
Yeah.
Well, then we know this all. It would be good. No, I'm joking.
Okay, so
Waited, we waited a long time.
Exactly. Let's, let's do this right.
Then I need a motion to have all the public comment on
Well, it's just public comment. I don't think we need
Yeah. Do what?
We, we don't need a motion for, to have public comment on this.
No. Okay.
The board seeks public comment about alternate stripe parking on Brookside and just say
Yeah, because you might want to extend it to some of those other areas that you're listening that even some of those other areas that have the ability to park on both sides could be an issue for fire trucks. They may want to do it till July.
So there would be a public comment session. And then based on that, if the board decided to do something. So there would be a public comment session. And then based on that, if the board decided to do something, whatever that might be. There would be a local law, because it would, it would have to be a local law. Following the introduction of the local law, there could then be a public hearing on the, on the introduction of the, uh, the local law. So people, people would get two bites at the apple.
Yeah, it's still progress.
I see. Anyone else?
Um, Rob Jewett had a question earlier.
Sure. Rob?
You guys answered my question. Thank you, though.
Thanks, Rob.
Anything else?
No one else.
We have a legal topic for executive section. I motion to go into executive section for one legal topic.
Should I agree?
I was a favor.
All right.
Any opposed? We won't be long, I swear. Thank you all.
Appreciate it, Bill.
I'm good, I.
See you about.